Cause meeting to order Tuesday, April 5th, two thousand twenty-two, seven P M. Give Somerton regular council meeting. Can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Like to be just to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like to welcome Yuma Union High School School Board Member David Lara. Thank you for all your help with the with the high school. Welcome. Uh, roll call.
Mayor Gerardo Naya.
Present.
Vice Mayor Miguel Villalpando.
Present.
Councilmember Luis Galindo. Councilmember Jesus Roldan.
Present.
Councilmember Martha Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember Juan Castillo.
Present.
Councilmember Lorena Zendejas.
Present.
Mayor have a quorum.
Thank you. I'm gonna go on to call to the public. Anybody from the public wishing to address council? Go ahead. State your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Gary Garcia Snyder, current resident in San Luis, Arizona. Used to be a resident here in Somerton. I wanted to say and congratulate you the naming of the elementary board for Robert T. Soto. Also, I want to say congratulations on the upcoming Amish Lotte Fest should be an awesome opportunity and sports coming here. And I want to apologize in advance. I know I might have said something before that might have offended the board or employees. I'm just adamant. I'm running for your state senate as a candidate officially. I know that the board is doing a great job. I know the city itself is in gray hands. But I believe us as a together, as a South County community, we need to get together because they need our help. They need our support. They need our guidance and leadership, and that's what it's here for. I know we're gonna be talking about on one of the agendas about fires, you know, getting the money from Garden Stone. But we, as we've seen in San Luis as well, are first responders and we're kind of tapped, especially with the Title forty-two going away. Likely if I've had the opportunity to offer my services with my volunteers to help out with the people coming across, just in case monitoring them, helping them out with services to guide them towards transportation and stuff like that because we know our fleet, we know our fire station and stuff like that, it's gonna be stuck. Our resources is gonna be tied up, especially for our community. It's a little tough. Now, I want to open the pathway for communications and anything that you guys need, I'm here. I want the opportunity to just be here for you guys as well, not just San Luis, not just Gadsden, not Somerton, but also I cover Yuma as well. And our opportunity, I think, is built together is for our future. And our future is now. The opportunity as elected officials, you guys have been great. I think we could be a little bit better if we put ourselves together. Because this is a crisis that is hitting at home. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wish to address council? Please state your name and address.
My name is Elizabeth Martinez, and I'm actually from Yuma. I was raised in the Somerton area. My husband's from Somerton. My family's from Somerton. They still live here. But my
Your address.
Oh, sorry. Twenty-two, twenty-eight, West Twenty-second Place in Yuma, Arizona. But my my initial concern is on this coming into Somerton and from the back. Sorry. So we have this Somerton Avenue and Madison or County fifteenth, whichever way you decide to look at it. Coming into the city of Somerton, you have a speed limit of fifty with the closest sign coming to the residential area as a reduced gear head. First, once you reach the, once you cross that cross street right here, you do have thirty-five. Exiting the city, you have a speed limit of thirty-five. So in consequence, I mean, things, you know, obviously, it just doesn't make sense coming into a city at a higher speed like that and exiting not, you know, kind of at a slower speed. If you look at Highway ninety-five, it's the other way around. Exiting, you can go fifty. Coming in, you're at forty and then decrease, right? So we have residential one and school kind of close by here as well, right? Middle school. This is my daughter's vehicle. Okay? And that's from an impact from somebody coming in at fifty to a residential area and coming into Somerton. Okay? With the whole, everything included in it. Okay? I mean, again, she's good. Everybody was good in the accident, but it shouldn't take, you know, a life or, or, I mean, for that matter, for them to try and figure out that this is probably not the right. I mean, it's a single lane. It's a two-way street, single. One going fifty, the other one going thirty-five is just not really, it just doesn't make sense. It, I'm sure, I don't know how many accidents. I tried asking the police officer to kind of, you know, guide us into saying how many accidents occur there. I mean, I've talked to other residents from that same area, and they say that there is several accidents in that area. So it's certainly not the first one. And I do, you know, as a concerned parent and everything, I would think that it's, it should be looked into to see if possibly, like, maybe we can match up the speeds. I don't know if this belongs to city and, you know, because it's city and county kind of right in between. If it's something that I have to go to both, but it certainly, I feel like it's worth looking into. Maybe statistically to see how many accidents occur there and if we can maybe try and decrease those. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Glad your daughter is okay. And yeah, this is the forum to address that. And the police chief is the one that, that per ordinance adjusts the the speed limits and together with public works. So give them your information and they're gonna contact you. Anybody else from the public wishing to address council? State your name and address.
William Santa Cruz, three-one-three East Twelve Place. I just recently had an accident right here. So this street is pretty concerning, dangerous. I T-boned somebody coming this way. Excuse me. And the car, the car was going from, from east to west. And I passed him real fast, and I didn't see that other car, the car that passed me blindsided blindsided me, so I couldn't see. And I hit, I T-boned this about a month ago right here. So if you can make this street, I would appreciate it. I don't go through these streets a lot, but it happened to, I just happened to go through there and I crashed. If you can make them right turn only, and that way this way too, from south to north, right turn only, so you won't have to cross because that's, that's, this is a danger. And then the other one, I've been living here since twenty seventeen. And it's getting busier and busier. So if Somerton and Bingham, they could have an arrow to turn left now. Especially on the weekends, you you take that red light like three, four times before you're able to cross to the left. So on both of these streets, if you could add the green arrow, so if you're on the left turn, you could start turning with no traffic.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Again, Public Works is working on the main street arrow, but yeah, any concerns, look at that. Give your information to Palacios and the one in green over there. You can give it now. Anybody else from the public wishing to address council? There's no one. We have three proclamations. The first one is National Library Week twenty-twenty-two. Is there somebody from the library here? Want to speak or want me to read the proclamation? Okay, you have. Okay. Whereas libraries connect people to technology, providing access to broadband internet, computers, and training that are critical for accessing education and employment opportunities. Whereas today's libraries and their services extend far beyond the four walls of the building, and everyone is welcome to use their resources. Whereas in terms of crisis, library and library professionals play an invaluable role in supporting their communities, both in person and virtually. Whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs that are as diverse as the populations they serve, ensure equity of access for all. Whereas to adapt to our changing world, libraries are expanding their resources and continue to meet the needs of their patrons and whereas the city of Somerton has a library sentry located at two forty West Canal Street. Residents peaceful and quiet enjoyment of books, internet, and other media. Now therefore, it resolve that I, Gerardo Naya, Mayor in the city of Somerton proclaim National Library Week, April three to the nine twenty-twenty-two. During this week, I encourage our residents to connect with their library by visiting online or in person to access resources and services. Come up, we're gonna take a picture. Counsel? Rosie Santana, you want to say a few words? Don't? Or anybody wants to say a few words? On the spot, sorry, chief.
No problem. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm just thankful for the team of dispatchers. You'll see our dispatchers here. I talk about them once in a while when I come up to the podium, and it's just a great pleasure to see them here. So you can see the faces that answer our nine-one-one and take care of our citizens every day. Thank you.
Thank you. National Public Safety Telecommun- Telecommunicators Week. Whereas the city of Somerton is committed to providing a high-quality emergency communication systems to the residents of the city of Somerton. And whereas the city of Somerton recognizes the professional and unending services of the telecommunications who answer nine-nine-one-one calls on a daily basis. And whereas the nine-one-one telecommunications are the link between people calling for help in an emergency situation and emergency response agencies who arrive on the scene. And whereas the nine-one-one telecommunications are the true backbone of the nine-one-one system. And whereas the President of the United States has historically acknowledged the second week of April as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. And now therefore, I, Mayor Gerardo Naya, Mayor of the city of Somerton, on behalf of the citizens of Somerton, do hereby proclaim the week of April tenth through the sixteenth twenty-two to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the city of Somerton and declare a citywide celebration of National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week and encourage all its citizens to celebrate this week with appropriate activities and commemorations. Thank you.
Yes.
I really, I really want to I'm here with the girl reading last. We have another proclamation. It's Fair Housing Month. Whereas the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight and the Fair Housing Amendments Act of nineteen eighty-eight prohibit discrimination in the sale, rental, leasing, and financing of housing or land to be used for construction of housing or in provision of brokerage services on the basis of color, race, religion, sex, disability, familial status, or national origin. And whereas the nineteen sixty-eight and nineteen eighty-eight federal Fair Housing Acts declare that it is a national policy to ensure equal opportunities in housing. And whereas April has been traditionally designated as Fair Housing Month in the United States. Now therefore, I, Gerardo Naya, Mayor of the city of Somerton, hereby proclaim the month of April as Fair Housing Month. In the city of Somerton and do hereby urge all citizens of this community to comply with the letter and the spirit of fair housing. And we have no one, right, getting there?
No, nobody from the housing.
Yeah, nobody from the housing. Yeah, so. Okay, we're gonna move on to consent agenda. We got nine items on consent agenda. Approval of minutes for February nineteen, city council retreat. Item number two, approval of terms and conditions of the Yuma Regional Communications Systems member agencies for five years. And number three, approval of lease agreement with Dell Outdoor Advertising, Inc. for one six-by-two billboard and structure located at eight fifty-one West Main Street in the amount of three thousand two hundred and forty per year. Approval of the sub-subrecipient agreement with the Department of Homeland Security for Operation Stone Garden grant program for mileage in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand and seventy-nine dollars and equipment in the amount of fifty-two thousand. Item number five, approval to purchase new sewer vacuum truck for wastewater department in the amount of four hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred eighty-three and fifty-four cents, following the bid by the Arizona State Procurement Office, solicitation number PM zero-zero-zero-two-two-eight, contract number CTR zero-four-one-eight-one-zero, and authorized city manager to execute an agreement with the best financing options for this equipment. Item number six, approval of Arizona Special Event License application for Battle of Cheladas on behalf of the city of Somerton for Saturday, May seventh, twenty-twenty-two, from three to eleven P M. At City Council Park in Somerton, Arizona. Item number seven, approval of Arizona Special Event License application for Fourth of July celebration on behalf of the city of Somerton for Monday, July fourth, twenty-twenty-two, from five to eleven P M. At Council Park in Somerton, Arizona. Item number eight, approval of Arizona Special Event License application for Somerton UTV Block Party on behalf of the city of Somerton for Saturday, October first, twenty-two twenty-two, from eleven to twelve A M. At one forty-three North State Avenue in Somerton, Arizona. Item number nine, approval of Arizona application for extension of premises patio permit by Manuel Valenzuela for Battle of Chelas car show registration, April second, twenty-twenty-two, at A five trifavo Bar and Grill. Does any member of council want to remove an item from consent agenda? Vice Mayor?
Mayor, I have two of them that I would like to pull from consent agenda, six point three and six point five, which is the billboard lease and the vacuum truck. I have some questions on that.
Okay, is there a motion for the others? And we're gonna remove item three and five.
Mayor, before you proceed to a motion on item six point one, we also have approval of minutes for March first, twenty-twenty-two. Just want to put it on the record.
Okay. So is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve consent agenda with the exception of six point three and six point five.
Mayor, Council, good evening. Brisa Garcia, Special Events Coordinator for Extension of Premises.
There's no questions for that.
But do you want to clarify something?
Yes, sir, I do. It's for April twenty-second, not April second.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, thank you. So, so, sir, motion, do you want to? April, do you want to amend that motion for April twenty-second?
Okay, so I'll amend the motion. Make another motion.
Yeah.
So I want to amend the motion and make a motion to approve consent agenda with Ms. Garcia's statement with the exception of six point three and six point five.
So motion by Councilman Castillo, second by Councilwoman Zendejas, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, so the first item, Vice Mayor?
Item six point three, I have a question for legal because we're doing a direct selection with with this billboard, Dell Outdoor Advertising. Does this fall within the parameters of our procurement policy? Because I read the the item, and the only justification that was provided was because the previous owner had a contract with them. Are we binded to that particular contract? Because if not, then if I'm correct, we need to go to an R F, R F, R F P. There is Lamar and other additional billboard companies that would probably be interested. So I don't think it's considered a sole source.
You know, Councilman, you are correct. If you want us to look into that and make sure that we have our duct tape, we can certainly do that. This lease was existing with the land, been in existence for the past ten years. And so when we purchased the property, that was one of the items that this council, when, when the property was purchased, that gave value to that property. And so we sort of get an attempt to retain some of those taxpayer dollars and put them back into our general fund. But if you want us to look into into other options.
Yeah, I just
Clarify that, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're not violating our procurement policy. And if we need to do an R F P, then, then so be it. Because it's kind of unique. We don't have, we've never bought a property that actually generated this type of revenue stream for us. So if you could take a look at that a little bit closer before we proceed with approving this lease agreement. And so I'm, I'm happy. I'm okay with that. But for
Do we need a motion to the table?
Make a motion to table.
So motion by Vice Mayor Villalpando, second by Councilwoman Zendejas, all in favor? Any opposed? Action carries. Item number five?
And item six point five, the vacuum truck in regards to that, I just wanted some clarification. Because the total dollar amount is over four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And my question would be to finance. Is this being leased or is it being purchased? Because on the memo, part of the, part of the cost is being allocated to a fiscal budget that we haven't even approved. So how would that work with a county?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, Zerina Gallegos, Finance Director. So the vehicle itself will be financed. The total cost of the vehicle is four hundred and fifty, four hundred and fifty-some thousand, but we are going to go ahead and finance that. The reason why it's split into the two fiscal years is because this year we had budgeted for that item. However, in order to, in order to cut a P O, we have to have the full amount. However, we'll get, we're going to place the order for that vehicle. We won't receive it until next fiscal year. So those funds will be budgeted in the next fiscal year as well. So that's going to come back to you in next fiscal year's budget to approve again.
So
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, but maybe we shouldn't have added the fact that it's for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three because that budget hasn't even been approved.
Correct, but we do have contingent budget this year. So we do have
So they should have put it on there.
Okay.
Which is one of the, I was like, how in the world is these guys taking out money?
My apologies. Yes, we should have indicated that the remainder of the funds would be, would be contingent. However, we don't anticipate receiving the actual piece of equipment until next fiscal year. So this is just placing the order and getting the authority to actually to place the order this year, and it won't be received till next year.
Okay.
We'll make sure that we clarify that for you in future. My apologies.
Thank you.
And any other questions? Their motion?
Make motion to approve item six point five.
So motion by Vice Mayor Villalpando, second by Councilman Galindo, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. We have two presentations. The first presentation is presentation and discussion of all items relating to the proposal for creation of a new city of Somerton called Ripken Baseball League.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Councilmembers. This is Mrs. Parks, your Creation Director. Just want to bring forward a new proposal that Yuma Baseball Association has. We've met with them several times. We find no implications that are gonna be present any, any sort of conflict or scheduling, programming issues for our department. This is something that was brought to your attention a couple of months ago, and we believe it's a good proposal for the city and a good option to reactivate baseball here in the community. At this moment, I want to pass along the mic to Ms. Samantha Wyers. She has a few more information on this proposal and a few more details.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I want to start with our mission with the Yuma Baseball Academy is to promote and bring back America's favorite pastime to the city of Somerton. We are aware that there hasn't been baseball here for a few years, and we strive as an academy to develop, encourage, and enhance the love of baseball to all children of the community. We work hard to engage all those involved, to find their passion for the sport and solidify their adventurous spirit through the game of baseball. We pride ourselves in teaching proper baseball mechanics, the foundations of its rules and positions. With capable coaching, proper weekly practices, and two handful of games, we foresee a bright and successful season with our children. Like he mentioned, we have been talking for the last two months. We are basically running out of time for a season to be done here in Somerton. We have, I think they have enrolled forty-plus, sixty-plus children at this point. We offer to bring over a hundred and fifty more to play here in the city of Somerton. This is a great opportunity for the city of Somerton to gain some revenue as well with all those families coming out here twice a week for games. We propose Tuesdays and Thursdays, possibly having fields available. We have spoken to Parks and Rec. They say that that's a possibility. And we just, we want to bring baseball back. That is what we are, our focus is. One of the things we have also proposed a budget. We have, we have it here in our proposal, what the cost breakdown would be. We anticipate that if we bring at least ten teams, each of them paying a thousand, it would bring in ten thousand dollars. From that, what we would pay would be the umpires, photographer, kids, and parents want to show off and showcase their kids playing ball. We want to provide the pitching mound. We want to provide awards, medals, trophies to these kids. And whatever money is left over, we are proposing to build a batting cage for Joe Munoz Field. At the end of having all of this done. At the end of having all of this done, possibly what we want to do is we want to have a clinic for special needs kids. Give them the opportunity to learn about baseball. Also host a clinic for kids who've never played throughout our season. And again, we want to just bring back the sport, bring back the passion. We want the city of Somerton to give us that opportunity because you guys haven't had it. We want to turn those lights back on in the field.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Councilwoman Zendejas? Go ahead, Councilwoman Zendejas.
Yeah, this, I spoke to Azuz before regarding the, I know that Cal Ripken will work for the, if the league is going to be part of Cal Ripken so the kids can photo stay and so forth, then just to for them to know that, you know, that they, they call it, you know, Bayou, they charge a fee per kid and also insurance. In other words, the city will be encouraged because insurance will be provided for the kids when they register into Cal Ripken or Bayou. So I think that's going to lead the adults of the city for many accident accidents. Because on that insurance, you can also put the fields and also the coaches and whoever's on the board. But on that matter, we're okay. It's, I know they put a budget in there, but it's a reminder that there's a fee for every kid who gets registered for to participate. And also insurance fee on top of that.
Thank you, Councilman.
Have a question, Mayor.
You don't have a question? Councilwoman Zendejas and then Castillo.
My question is, these teams that will be participating, are they from Somerton or you're bringing them from out?
They're from all over. They're from Yuma, San Luis, Somerton. We are getting these forty to sixty kids that have already enrolled here in Somerton and putting them together with the teams that we're bringing in. We're including everyone.
Because, and the reason for my question is because I would hate to see children that have never played baseball and be left, you know, sitting because you're bringing in teams that have played together for many years. And so, you know, that's something that I wouldn't.
We talked about this at the other meeting. So because we don't know the ages ranging of the sixty kids that are enrolled, we probably won't be able to make teams from those, from those kids that are already enrolled. So what we are proposing is that we bring them onto the established teams, have them learn from the kids that have been playing for a long time. Because I'm pretty sure that a lot of them that are registered have never played before. This is where our coaching, the experience that the Yuma Baseball Academy has, it's not going to be daddy coaching. It's, you know, coaches who have been doing this for a while, who will take on that role to teach these kids the proper mechanics of how to play baseball. We want to introduce a passion for the game. We're not here to show off and say, this is the best team and we're going to beat all of you. This isn't time to be inclusive and have all those kids play at different levels with the other kind, the other teams for them to learn from them.
So you have set rules that for parents and coaches to follow and so forth?
Ms. Zendejas, if I can add.
Yes.
YBA is an academy. Academy is a school. Okay, so we're, the main focus of us doing this is we want to teach the kids. Okay, it's not about having our nine best players play all the time and three or four kids sitting out. It's not about that. We wanted to give them the chance, an opportunity to play different positions, learn how to play. It's not, oh, I'm only play right field because I don't know how to catch. It's not about that. It's about teaching them. We're, we're institution and academy. We're willing to teach and that's what our passion is, at least. Putzani and myself, I mean, that's, that's what we strive on, okay? That we want to show our kids, our community, how to play baseball.
And I thank you for that because it is so needed and our kids to participate and away from the computer and their phone and stuff like that. And that was, that was just my concern, but I thank you for clarifying and, and, you know, thank you for, for. And I know that Cal Ripken is a very competitive, you know, but I just want to make sure that every child has the opportunity to play and participate in this great organization that you guys are forming.
And if I'm picking back on that on the Cal Ripken, and that's what's dictating our timeframe. We can't, we can't hold another two weeks because, like I said, we're, yes, we're trying to run a league, but sometimes we want to give the chance to kids to go on beyond mainly just here. And in order for us to do that, we need to start pretty much, Yuma already started about three weeks ago. So we're running way, way behind. And like I said, those timeframe come upon us and we miss that window and that's, that's how we have our kids. So we would like to make that one.
Thank you.
Castillo?
And this has been presented to our Parks and Rec Commission, right? And what was, what was their output? It was a.
It was approved.
Approved by Parks and Rec? You know, and I think that, I think, Mr., Mr., Sosa, you answered this question because I was going to say, you know, what's the tentative start date that you guys had in mind?
We had in mind March, but we're now in April. We are, our tentative schedule is.
What happened?
April eleventh.
April eleventh, okay. And, and, and is this kind of like a one season and done? Or is this something that you foresee continuing with our city?
They approved us for one year to kind of get a feel for it and see how, how it goes.
Right, so we're looking at, okay, spring and also fall?
Exactly.
Okay, and then, okay.
And then we would revisit.
And being that is, you're going to be associated with Cal Ripken, I'm assuming that there's going to have that opportunity for Somerton to be represented at the state and national level, right? Regional, if we get that.
And we go at Somerton. And when we go play at state, then we represent Arizona. Once you get to regionals, they say Arizona from Somerton.
Okay.
And I, and I thank you for that because, you know, our high school's coming and so we want to start them young and get them ready for whenever they're in high school, they'll be the number one teams in the state.
Something that we brought up too with the, with the committee was we have T-ball. T-ball is very successful here in Somerton, but then.
But then it dies.
That's it. There's nowhere else to go. This is the opportunity for them to say, hey, now we have more.
Later on, you're going to come with softball, Mr. Sosa?
Yeah, we're working on that. That's, that's only right as well. And when you said that, I'm missing my practice to be here, so.
Can you piggyback on softball for this?
Yes, no, no, definitely. That's, that's also in the works, so, so it should be coming up as well.
And, and one last question, Mayor. This kind of like tentative budget breakdown, I'm assuming you've already discussed it with Mr. Mesa and it covers, you know, it covers, let's say, all the city expenses and everything, making sure that it balances out. I mean, I don't think we're in the business to make money off of this, but to at least break even.
Try to break even, yes.
And I think that's one thing that Mr. Mesa had mentioned that, I mean, it's not, it's nothing bad towards our city that we always having to put, at least never cover the expense. And hopefully by doing this, we can close that gap to where we're not actually having to put that expense on the city. And, and the only way we can do that is by bringing other players from outside that also want that opportunity to play. So kind of mitigate the cost of our league as well.
Vice Mayor?
Just one quick question. How many ball fields are you guys going to require?
Yeah, we got two right now. It should be Main Street and John Munoz.
And, and pretty much that's what's going to dictate how many teams we can.
Allow.
Allow, bring in to play. I mean, that's, 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 that's what's going to let us know, okay, we can have, we can host ten teams or we can host fifteen teams depending on.
How many fields?
So right now, Mr. Mesa, as I mentioned, we can use Main Street and John Munoz.
What about Desert Sonora?
I think that's being used for T-ball. So that's, that's for the younger guys.
What about Reynoso?
Reynoso.
Reynoso right now is in, it's in maintenance for the graduation, so we're not able to use it until the end of May. And just want to point out that the only impact on the city is going to be on supplies. It's not a major financial impact. It's what we would invest on this project for the community and for the kids. Fixing the fields, basically, some staff time.
What, what was the reason why you're saying Reynoso?
They're fixing it basically for making some improvements for the graduation. For the middle school graduation, yes. Sure, they, they needed like a month and a half, so.
Any other questions or comments?
So we're, you guys are starting April eleventh?
Monday.
If you get it through, we'll start Monday, so.
Yeah, it started in March.
Well, this is just a presentation not for approval, so what's, so what's the?
Presentation. On the presentation, I would, I would like to see maybe like an MOU with, with the Cal Ripken League. If they have those similar agreements with the city of Yuma or elsewhere. But for the time being, if you give the directive, we can, we can put that together.
Okay, so, okay, do we expedite and have the attorney and give authorization to the city manager to execute that MOU? Or would, do we want to?
That, that's fine. I think, I think from what Mr. Mesa tells us, there's little impact to to our facility and to our budget. It could be something quick and easy to draft.
But yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that direction, Mayor. The only real concern is, I guess, the insurance. If they're able to provide that, then I'm more than happy to let our city administrator sign off on it.
Mayor, as stated, sign off and then bring it back for April for the council approval as well. To make sure it's, yes, the actual approval. But given the, the authorization to sign off on it, but always just as a, as a courtesy, bring it to, to Mayor and Council for approval.
Okay.
So they, they wouldn't start until we get it approved?
No, they can start.
They can start, but then we just.
Yeah, it'll be after the fact.
Okay, good luck and twenty twenty-five Somerton Toro State Champions.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you for thinking of Somerton.
Seven point two, presentation, discussion, creation of vehicle take-home policy and establish guidelines for fringe benefits.
Mayor and Council, several months ago, it was requested by, by council to bring some information regarding our take-home policy or establishing some guidelines for fringe benefits in accordance to the information that was provided by, by council. And as you can see, these are the departments that have a vehicle that is given, is, is taken home. So we looked at the IRS guidelines and obviously there's some, some guidelines on there from the IRS as far as fringe benefit. The other issue obviously that's not on here is, is some sort of policy, if you will, that you might want to give us guidance, if any, in terms of who takes it home and what type of usage. There are several items on here on the IRS regulations that actually on page seven, starts on page seven. And it's depending on the examples that they give as far as a fringe benefit. It can be used as mileage, not personal, but mileage for, for wherever the meetings are going and some personal mileage if you're taking it home. Normally, in the past, what has happened in, in speaking with council was that the discussion, I guess, did occur so many years ago regarding this issue. And one of the issues was that some of the vehicles that were outside the city hall were being vandalized. And that was my conversation with that. That's the reason why some of these vehicles were taken home. I don't know what other conversations were there, out there before this policy take home in terms of what council has directed past administration to do. So do you have any questions regarding who's taking these vehicles home? Police, obviously there is the police chief, investigation lieutenant, detective, animal control. I have one and the one that I have is for council and economic development. Fire has the fire chief, battalion chief, fire inspector, public works. As you can see, public works director, water division, wastewater division, street sanitation, fleet division and four vehicles that are assigned monthly. One vehicle is on rotation. The magistrate slash judge has one vehicle. Parks and Recreation, one's vehicle on a, on a rotation. So there's a total of twenty-one vehicles that have been taken home. And six which are rotational vehicles.
Any questions or comments?
On, on public works, the supervisors are, that take the vehicles home, is it because they're on call?
Well, it looks like we have some work to do. We needed to, first of all, create that policy. So it's not going to get hashed out tonight, that's for sure. So quite honestly, Mayor, I think we need to establish a work session so we could start deciding how that policy is going to look like. But as far as it doing it tonight, I don't see it being done tonight.
Any other questions, comments? Like Vice Mayor said, there's, present a policy and then we're going to hash it out. So any other questions or comments?
Yeah, because it's.
Yeah, I'd say sixty days in order for them to present something because we've been going around, around this subject for what seems a good ten years. So that's before you. So it's, it's not, nothing new.
No, I think, I think June will be probably a good month. Obviously, we have retreats for budget here in the next two meetings and then, not retreat, sorry, work session for budget and then approval, probably budget in May. So June will be a good month. That gives city attorney plenty of time to get something going as far as a policy concerned and who can take vehicles, who cannot, and, and get some guidance.
Yeah, because we're probably going to, like I said, we're probably going to have to have a work session so we could give our feedback on what we want to see in that, in that policy.
We're going to go to a public hearing. Public hearing on all matters concerning zoning cases PLN twenty twenty-two zero 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 two through PLN twenty-two dash zero 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 five. He said, a request by VNA Vega of Vega and Vega Engineering on behalf of Somerton School District Number Eleven for General Plan Land Use Amendment and concurrent rezoning of parcel number two one ones dash zero four dash zero two three and parcel number two one one dash zero four dash two four from government infill incentive overlay to R three infill incentive overlay and R one five infill incentive overlay. Is there a motion to open public hearing? So motion by Councilwoman Garcia? Second by Councilman Galindo, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. So now we get to hear his hold.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. This is the public hearing for zoning cases PLN twenty-two dash zero 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 two through PLN twenty-two dash zero 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 five. A set of requests by VNA Vega of Vega and Vega Engineering on behalf of Somerton School District Number Eleven for the General Plan Land Use Amendment and rezoning of two parcels on the west side of the city from government to R three and R one five respectively. The ultimate purpose of this, of both requests is to allow a new ninety-unit apartment complex and a new fifty-lock R one five subdivision. I would like to begin the public hearing with a presentation of an overview of the cases. I would like to begin the public hearing with a presentation of an overview of the cases. And maybe, there we go. Mayor and council, these are the two parcels that we are talking about. Parcel B1 is a 6.75 acre parcel and it is located here. It is the parcel to the north, the one directly located on the northwest corner of Tumbaga, sorry, the southeast corner of Tumbaga Loop and Main Street. Parcel B1 is the parcel that is being proposed to be rezoned from government to, to R3. This is where the apartments would be going in the smaller parcel to the north, directly adjacent to the new elementary school and across the street from the future Parkview Commerce Center commercial development. The parcel to the south is parcel B2. That is a 9.75 acre parcel and that is where the single-family R15 subdivision is being proposed. Both of these rezonings require minor general plan amendments. In total, the overall request to, to proceed with the projects require two rezonings and two minor general plan amendments. This presentation encompasses all of them. That way we can keep it as as quick and simple as possible. Go to the next slide. So currently, both parcels are zoned government. This is where originally the school district had proposed to build a future middle school, but that plan appears to be no longer going forward. There's plenty of capacity at these existing schools. So the school district is, is going to be selling this property and to, to potential development. And again, this is the zoning, currently zoned government, and it is gonna be rezoned, the north one to R3 and the south parcel to R15. A little bit of a deeper dive into parcel B1. The developer or it is being, has been disclosed to staff that the property will be sold to the Chelsea Development Corporation. They've done projects here in the area. One of their more recent projects was in Calexico. And this is more or less what they envisioned for the area for parcel B1. 90 units, income restricted apartments. Staff, when we were analyzing this project, you know, for any time an apartment complex is coming anywhere, we want to ensure that it's compatible with the area. And we have this vision of high quality development, especially on that west end of the town. So we will be including a condition of approval into this that in order for these apartments to be built, the developer will have to undergo a formal site plan review process prior to submitting for a building permit. That way we can review the design, the aesthetics and the quality before we even get to the building permits middle stage. We believe this could make the project in the end the best it can be. And then on parcel B2, the proposal is for a, or actually the first R15 single-family subdivision in Somerton. We just approved the R15 district not that long ago and right after that, the next rezoning was for an R15. So this is the first R15 proposal in the city of Somerton. 50 lots ranging from 5,000 square feet to close to 7,000 square feet, directly adjacent to the Rollo subdivision. And it has been disclosed to staff that Housing America is the prospective builder of the subdivision. So we can expect similar quality in this subdivision as what is currently going on in Rollo. You may recall that we recently updated our zoning and subdivision ordinances to include certain residential design guidelines, the tile roofs, the landscaping, the block wall. All of that will be required into this new subdivision. At the February 28th regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the commission did recommend approval of zoning cases PLN 22-002 through PLN 22-0005 with the conditions listed in Exhibit A. And our recommendation is for approval, but this is just the public hearing. We'll, we'll get to the cases later. You go to the next slide. Would the council like to listen to the conditions of approval that staff is proposing?
If there, there are other than standard conditions or is there anything that stands out?
Okay. Yeah, so there is a few that are not standard. Let me start with number. Number seven is that the owner will be, the owner slash developer shall submit to the city of Somerton for review a complete building permit submittal package and improvement plans within two calendar years from the date of approval of the rezoning slash land use amendment for the Somerton City Council. This is for the apartment complex. So they have to submit building construction plans within two years. And, and then after that, that would be the time expiration. That's condition number seven. Condition number eight is the developer shall submit to the city of Somerton for review a preliminary application package within, I should say, two years on there, from the date of approval of the rezoning slash land use amended by the Somerton City Council. So they have two years to submit plans for the subdivision, for both the apartments in the subdivision. Condition number nine is the owner slash developer shall, shall conduct a traffic impact study for the development of the apartment complex and the single-family subdivision. The traffic impact study shall be submitted as part of the preliminary flat application or of the apartment complex with complex, whichever comes first. This is because the traffic impact is expected to be substantial. We're talking about 50 homes. And the apartment is night, upwards of 90 units. We have, I believe it's in the Yuma County public work standards. I could be wrong. That we have a criteria of when a project requires a traffic impact study and both of them individually on their own required a traffic impact study. But since they're coming in together, then it absolutely needs to be conducted. And this will come later on, this work, as they get closer to construction. And then I mentioned earlier that the apartments, because we want to ensure quality development, we want to make sure that they're aesthetically compatible with everything that's gonna be going into that west side of town, they'll be required to submit a, to apply for a formal site plan review. This is a separate zoning process that we have, but we've never, rarely used. And this is just to review the design, the layout before they even apply for a building permit. So they will be required of the apartment complex. And those are the only conditions that are other than standard. And does the council have any questions for staff at this point?
Any questions? Does the public have any questions? Public hearing?
That concludes my presentation. There are some recommended motions, but this is just public hearing. All address those in the future items.
Is there a motion to close public hearing? Some motion by Vice Mayor Villalpando?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Castillo, also favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're gonna go on to new business. Discussion of possible action to approve minor general plan amendments for cases PLN 22-0002 and PLN 22-0004. A set up request by VNA of Vega and Vega Engineering on behalf of Somerton School District Number 11 for the General Plan Land Use Amendment of Assessor Parcel Number 211-04023 and Assessor Parcel Number 211-0424 from public facilities to high-density residential and low-density residential.
Thank you, Mayor, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is the action item on, related to the zoning cases that you just heard of in the public hearing. This is the, for the, to change the land use, the general plan land use. Currently, both parcels on, that we just discussed have, are designated by the general plan as public facilities, which is compatible with their current government zoning. So in order to approve the rezoning to R15 and R3 respectively, they will need to be changed from the land use from public facilities to high-density residential and low-density residential respectively. So Assessor Parcel Number 211-04-023, Parcel B1, the one to the north, will be changing from public facilities to high-density and parcel, Assessor Parcel Numbers 211-04-24 will be going from public facilities to low-density residential. Just, does the council have any further questions related to those, to that case?
Actually, I have a question for Legal. Since I'm on the school board, do I recuse myself from this?
Thank, thank you for asking that question. We, we looked it up. So the public official such as yourself who has a pecuniary or proprietary interest in a decision must disclose it and refrain from all participation. So I, I think there's talk that even though you don't have a financial decision or something at stake, the fact that you own that's the property, that, that could be classified as a conflict. So we would recommend refraining from.
For the record, I don't own it. The Somerton School District does. So I will recuse myself from this.
Same, Mayor. I'll, I'll recuse myself after Legal's advice, being part of the Somerton School Board. I'll recuse myself from the voting.
Do you own the property? Is there a motion? Some motion by Vice Mayor Villalpando? Second by Councilman Galindo, also in favor?
If, if I may, Mayor, sorry. There is the, for the motion, it's subject to the conditions in Exhibit A. I don't know if that's specified in this case.
It was a recommended motion, right? To, with conditions.
Okay. One or two.
Motion carries. Item number two, discussion of.
Hold on, Mayor. I think there's two motions on, on this item. One motion per parcel.
Okay.
It would be the, as, as listed here on suggested action, number one and number two.
So the motion to approve rezoning case PLN 2022-0003 with the conditions listed in Exhibit A from staff report.
I'll make a motion, Mayor.
Some motion by Councilman Rolan? Second by Councilwoman Garcia, also in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, discussion of possible action to approve rezoning case.
Mayor, there was a there was a second motion on, on, for this one item.
Yeah, 0024.
Is it listed here? Oh, yeah. Is there a motion that's? Probably better to give the recommendation and then we can make the motion. So what am I missing here? Yeah. Were they? Yeah, one and two. Yeah. Yeah, for, well, we had, if I'm reading this correctly, it would be two motions. The first, we didn't read it, but it was asked.
I must not be hearing right, Mayor. Apologize.
Was 004? It's not here in the recommended.
0024.
Okay, okay. So it's one and then, okay, so it's separate, but this is one and one and two and two. Okay.
For the land use change, and a second motion and the second item for the rezoning case. And then there's another motion for the ordinance on the third case.
Tell us what we need a motion on.
Which one do you need a motion on?
Are they, can they see what I'm seeing here? Are, are they able to see that?
So, so per the clerk, we did item 9.1 in that motion and those two motions carried.
Okay.
So now we're not, item 9.2.
The way it is here, it's one motion here and one motion here, but I want one and two. But this is for four, this is for two. So one and one is for the first motion.
About 10 motions when we started with this. We worked it to this most clearest way.
We're confused. We, we had it right. It was like, is there a motion?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
Right. Thank you. Sorry for the confusion.
And read 9.2. Have a better voice.
9.2. Sure, Mayor. Mr. Mayor and Council, so this is the rezoning part of the whole case. This, this is approving the actual change of zoning. Now that you've approved the change of land use, we can proceed to the zoning. So Parcel B1, the one to the north, will be changing from the government slash infill incentive overlay to R3 slash infill incentive overlay with the conditions listed in Exhibit A. And the parcel to the south, Parcel B2, will be changing from government slash infill incentive overlay to R15 infill incentive overlay with the conditions listed in Exhibit A.
What motion do you want? What's your recommended action?
I, my, I would say it is the suggested action as shown there exactly.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motion to approve rezoning case PLN 22-0003.
Some motion by Vice, with conditions.
With the conditions, yeah.
There's a motion, Vice Mayor Villalpando?
Second, Mayor.
Second by Councilman Galindo, also in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
And I'll make the motion to approve rezoning case number PLN 22-00005 as well, with any conditions that may be attached.
Motion by Vice Mayor Villalpando?
Second, Mayor.
Second by Councilman Galindo, also in favor?
Thank you, Mayor.
Opposed, motion carries. The Councilman Rolan fell asleep.
And that, that includes mine.
Oh, I'm here.
Item number three, discussion of possible action to approve first reading by title only a ordinance number 2022-001, ordinance of city of Somerton, amending ordinance number 2015-002 and rezoning certain areas in the city for real property described herein as Assessor Parcel Number 211-04023, a 6.2 acre parcel more or less, and more particularly described on Exhibit A, attached here too, from government infill incentive overlay to R3 infill incentive overlay, multifamily residential rezoning certain areas in the city for real property described herein as Assessor Parcel Number 211-04024, a 9.75 acre parcel more or less, and more particularly described on Exhibit A, attached here too, from government infill incentive overlay, R15 infill incentive overlay, single-family residential.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 2022-001.
Some motion by Vice Mayor Villalpando? Second by Councilwoman Garcia, also in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And, and just for the, there's also two, two recuses on.
Recuses on the other one.
Madam clerk.
Discussion of possible action to retain Capital Financial as a broker of record and approve new rates from Blue Cross Blue Shield of Arizona for health insurance plan and other related benefits for city of Somerton employees for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Armando Leon, HR Specialist for the city of Somerton. Joining us is Tom Bomont. He's the Senior Account Manager for Capital Financial. And he'll be going through a presentation, going over some of the work that they did in order to get to where we're at as far as the rates and what the benefits will look like for the following fiscal year. the rates and what the benefits will look like for the following fiscal year. As you may recall, last year we went through a very extensive vetting process to determine who our broker would be. After that vigorous vetting process, Capital Financial ended up being our broker of record. So I'll turn it over to Tom to go over the presentation and then we'll have any open up for any questions after the presentation.
Thank you, Armando. Deputy Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council Members. You know, we stood up here last year, I had a whole bunch more little small numbers to look at. We don't have as many. Look at our renewal, just a couple of quick slides at the beginning. One COVID nineteen certainly is, as we hope is on the way out, certainly still has an impact to a lot of benefit plans. One is testing is is now required to be covered by health plans up to eight per member per month. Hopefully that need will wane and the government is allowed up to eight per household at no charge. So we have provided that information certainly to, you know, to get folks to get those tests and have them. And those will be available moving forward. So go ahead and go on to the next slide. We'll just spend a quick second here. Just knowing that we have a high deductible health plan, which is an HSA compatible plan in place. Just a couple of little changes on the left side of the health savings account. An individual now can contribute fifty more dollars this year to thirty six fifty and a family can go up to seventy three hundred. Those deductible and out of pocket requirements simply are what must be met in order for that plan to be considered a qualified high deductible and our plan does satisfy that. So the right side, there's flexible spending accounts. It's not something we currently have in place, just an item of discussion that 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 Armando and his team and I discussed. So let's take a look at the next page on the renewal. So here we're looking at at three different items. As we look at the right side in the red, those are our current plans. We've got three medical plans that are that are currently in place. You can see down at the bottom, the rates for each of the tiers of each of those plans as well as the enrollment on the left side of each. Go to the middle section in the green. We'll see that is the initial renewal, the Blue Cross Blue Shield of Arizona came out with. Where we're looking at, you see the red kind of right in that in that right side, kind of upper center, out of pocket maximum. We called that out in red. That is the only plan design change of the three plans that Blue Cross is requiring for this July first renewal. So that's just a small increase in what's called the out of pocket maximum is the only required plan change. So with that, the initial renewal action of Blue Cross was put us at just shy of fourteen percent, which based on conversations we had had with Blue Cross, conversations with the city, with Armando and his team, had really spent a lot of time, you know, working on showing our commitment to Blue Cross. And so what we're looking at on the right side is the revised renewal. After further discussions, where then Blue Cross with their final renewal action brought us in at just an eight percent increase. So although we never like to see any increase on on any of our benefits, eight percent we're very happy with based on just our kind of a few demographic switches throughout the year as well as some several emerging large claims. We did see quite a bit more large claims this year than we did last year at inception, but we're still looking at a very favorable reduction in our renewal down to eight percent. You see within the three plans how they all were very similar in that renewal action. So the one that took a little higher than the other, just at about eight point seven percent would be our richest plan, which is that one on the right, the PPO fifteen hundred. That would is something we don't see is out of line. Typically, the just based on the the decision by the employee to pay that additional money for that richer plan typically means that there are going to see a little bit more utilization. There's much less cost sharing on that plan with as rich as that plan is. So very favorable on the on the medical side for the renewals of the three plans. Once again, with only a minor change on on our PPO fifteen hundred plan, but overall rate action of eight percent increase compared to the prior year. Taking a look at the next slide. We have a supplemental plan that's remained in place that's that's through Transwestern. It allows access to the Mexico network, not only for medical, but for dental. Whole idea is to find an affordable option to allow our employees to for the employee to be able to choose one of the Blue Cross major medical plans, but based on the costs and the expense that that would be borne by them to 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 cover their dependents, the city has offered the an option with this Mexico Medical Network as well as a dental provider in the area. Now, the nice part is we're only seeing a fifty cent increase on the rate this year, which is simply on the administrative fee. We've got good utilization. We're starting to see, as you all know, the border has opened back up. We're starting to see a little bit more crossing. So really a great plan in place as we know the cost so much lower on the other side of the border. Really a good incentive to help keep a lot of the costs, some of those costs off of the of our major medical, but on the same token, providing an opportunity for coverage for dependents that might otherwise go uninsured or underinsured. So very positive on the on that medical piece with only a fifty cent impact. One of the next slide, please. One thing we introduced last year was a telemedicine program through Healthiest U. Once again, this is a very robust program. It allows access twenty four hours a day, seven days a week for not only employee, but every member in their household. So not only is this a benefit that is can one that can help to save that member monies, it also saves the city as well because any utilization through the telemedicine versus going and see a provider are claims that don't go against our experience on the medical plan. Also helping in productivity in the workplace, pick up the phone twenty four seven, your tablet to make a call. They can even diagnose, excuse me, drugs in a lot in certain circumstances. So really robust program on the telemedicine side. We've seen some good utilization in the first year. We've got some things in place to try to increase that because it just benefits not only those members, but are with the city as well. These next few slides, it could kind of lump together. We've got our, we had a very great offer last year with MetLife where we we introduced dental and vision for the first time, as well as continued with a city sponsored life insurance as well as the ability, which was also a new introduction for the employees to buy up additional life insurance, not only for themselves, but for their family. So with that synergies of MetLife and the administrative and and all of those being together, we're very fortunate to to have no rate changes, no benefit changes on all four of the MetLife products. So we'll look at the dental slide, see there's no changes there. The vision is with MetLife, no changes to the benefits or the rates. Life renewal on MetLife, this has both the city paid basic life benefit as well as that voluntary where the where the employee can buy additional additional coverage for themselves and their family. No rate changes. So this last slide kind of takes and says, all right, we've looked at it's some very positive numbers as far as as an increase on medical of eight percent, very small on that Mexico network. But how does it affect the city specifically? You all provide very rich benefits, you pay a hundred percent of the employee cost of two of the base plans. You provide a good portion of coverage for those dependents. So what this slide does is takes and just calls out the City of Summerton's spend. So what we've done is taken away any employee who would purchase to buy up to the higher plan that would purchase their to bring their dependents on. And so when we look at each of these benefits between our three medical plans, the HSA account, which a contribution is made for those that that select that HSA account, the dental, the vision, the basic life, Healthiest U, which is that telemedicine program. The top slide on or the top part in red shows what our current spend is about a million twenty thousand based on on what the what the city spends for the benefit program. With the renewal increase, we look at that eight percent on the medical. We saw that small on the medical side. What that now shows is these same contributions, these same benefits and what the city is is contributing towards. And we can see that down on the annual, that brings that up to a million ninety thousand, which represents just about a six and a half percent increase to the city's budget. So overall impact to the city based on what you all provide to all of your folks is simply a six and a half percent adjustment to to that current spend. Very positive in this era, not only with COVID claims picking up and hearing from a lot of the carriers how we're starting to see more people getting out and about, getting some of those things that they weren't taking care of or maybe weren't able to take care of during the darn pandemic. And we are starting to see some claims go up as we're all seeing the impacts who are just our daily lives on everything that we're buying and and costs of everything going up, it's just getting crazy. So very positive on the on our side. I think that we should be very fortunate knowing where we sit and from that side. So next slide, please. Just wanted to end with open enrollment. You know, part of when we came on and and started our partnership with you all last year was we'd helped improve that open enrollment experience. And I think that between not only the different meetings that Armando and his team did for the staff, we're able to have a call center, a bilingual call center that could help folks enroll in the benefits, ask questions about the benefits, as well as introduced an online system that allowed everyone to make their elections online. And that continues as an as an ongoing year round tool for new hires, life changing events, et cetera. So we are, this slide, basically what it says is we're going to continue with not only the materials we provided and as far as kind of a benefits guide that was provided electronically, a presentation, what's called a brain shark, which is basically a narrated presentation. Both of those were in English and Spanish, but the whole idea is let's help everyone understand their benefits, help to use their benefits better. And so rather than forcing them all to sit in a meeting and probably not listening to anything that's said, now they get a chance to sit down with their family, to watch it, to ask questions, have things, have tools available throughout the year. But the whole goal is to continue to to bend the curve, you know, in the in the claims that we can. We have insurance for the big claims, you know, God forbid something bad happens, we're covered. But let's let's make everyone and let's continue. And Armando and his team have really put a big focus on wellness and and continuing to provide education to the to the employees. I don't know, because it's important to understand the benefits that they have. So when it is time to use it, they know how to use them correctly and they know what what they have available. So I'll stop talking at that and take any any questions.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question, mayor. And then if you could go to the other slide, the one part to this one. That one. Just looking at this slide right here. Just I just want to make sure that I'm reading it correctly.
Okay.
So for for the medical, for the dependent cost, we're looking at the number of EEs. So we have fourteen employees on this one for the dependent. And then on the medical, the PPO, the five thousand, we have twenty three, right?
That is correct.
Okay. You know, thank you for this information. I think this this really does put it in perspective. And it's very helpful. I just wanted to make sure that I I was reading it correctly and and and, you know, so.
I appreciate that.
That's all I have, mayor. Just wanted to be.
Any other questions or comments?
Sorry. On the dental, I was looking at the report and at the bottom, really small letters, it says Dr. Payan only. So that means on the in the health or the dental in Mexico, that's the only dentist they can go to.
That is correct. And that is part of part of their medical is much more extensive within that network. There is only one dental provider. That is correct. But remember, that is something that with the city pays for the dental coverage for the employee through MetLife, which is the US best. So that is simply an alternative, one that someone could purchase if they wanted, wish to access care with that provider in Mexico or those that meet that criteria of covering themselves and employee and not their dependents if they do have dependents. The city provides that Mexico medical and dental coverage for them at that.
Through Transwestern.
Correct.
So and the reason I'm asking is because my dentist accepts Transwestern and and then it's not Dr. Payan. So that's why I was just wondering why only him or his clinic.
That a little further because at this point, it could simply be that the plan is on and the negotiation that they have in place for our specific plan. If you're finding other providers as they continue and that could be as they also continue to grow as well. So let's certainly worthy of further research, find some more information for you.
Thank you.
One question, do we offer mental health insurance? I know through the hospital, Blue Cross Blue Shield, we have the chain link and we get seven visits with counseling or whatever. Do we have that option for the employees?
We do. And so not only on the major medical on Blue Cross, mental health has to be in parity with the other benefits. So very robust mental health benefits within the the major medical. Also via MetLife, so with our bundling with those, offers what's called an employee assistance program, which is an EAP. So that's available to the employees, all of the members of their household, not only for mental health. They could be referred to counselors if needed, but phone support, but that extends to financial, legal, finding caregivers, just really a support. Basically, there's the best way to say for an EAP is pick up the phone and ask if they can help. If they can't, they'll tell you. But for the most part, it it mental health is a big portion of that of that employee assistance program. Very important. It's been just such a benefit that's really has been risen to the top during the pandemic. We see the utilization has increased and and it's fantastic because it's someone to talk to. A lot of folks maybe don't have someone in the household or just to be able to to have a confidential free consultation, having that tool is very important.
The EAP or the mental support programs, that was one big reason why we chose the plans that we're in right now because when we talked about providing that bundle with mental health, MetLife was able to provide it built into the to the plan design. And that was one major reason why we chose that particular plan.
Vice Mayor.
Armando, I have a quick question. Was this the only insurance carrier or was there other ones that you looked into or?
Last last year, when we went through the vetting process for this particular this particular time, no. We're just continuing with with Blue Cross Blue Shield. Last year, we went through the whole vetting process and at that point in time, we did look at many, many different types of companies. And the three that were the finalists were the three that responded to our request, many of them declined. And that's where we ended up where we're at.
Any questions, comments?
Thank you.
Item number five, discussion of possible action to re.
There's an action item on this.
There's an action item? What is it? Didn't see it. My capital. Okay.
Our is only a simple motion, not complex. The staff recommendation is to remain with Capital Financial as our broker and renew the health and insurance coverage with the proposed rates as presented.
You know what, let me ask you just one more question. Based on on those numbers, we still haven't held open enrollment, right?
Not yet.
So those are kind of like the tentative numbers for next year, so they they can change?
Yeah, you are correct. This the at the time the renewal is done, we take the most accurate and up to date enrollment at that point. We'd assume, especially with the fact that of no plan design changes, a very robust contribution strategy by the city, probably not a lot of migration. If so, maybe some that might be willing to try more on that HSA as that continues to get more and more traction in our country and just as a great investment mechanism, which which not only benefits the member in 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 monies to help pay for these darn health costs as they continue to go up, but on healthy years, they stay with you all the time. So the more we can get to migrate into those would also be further savings to the city. But we wouldn't anticipate Councilmember Juan Castillo any 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 a big migration in enrollment simply because our plans are remaining the same and you all provide this pretty robust contributions for them.
Okay, yeah, because I just kind of figured out the, you know, just how much we're paying for, let's say, the dependent coverage and I came out to nineteen point nineteen point four nine percent. So it'll be pretty much similar about twenty percent of our overall budget, right?
And remember, on that contribution slide is where we showed that dependent, which it varies just because of the difference, whether you have your spouse, maybe your child or your entire family could change, but that would would move a little bit. There's still some cost sharing with the employee, anyone that even does take that dependent.
But my question is, do we need to approve these rates? You said, what what does it do? We approve this rates right now. It can change. So it's I thought it was just a presentation. It is what it is. It's.
Mayor, the the reason why this is brought up is twofold. One, so that once you have the decision made, finance can go ahead and plug this into their budget. It's a done deal. And number two, we want to be able to have the employees contribute their portion in June. In other words, they can select, they need to start selecting their plan in the next two or three weeks in May, having open enrollment with their June paychecks, we would, they would pay those contributions so that on July first, Blue Cross Blue Shield starts getting the money for.
So that on July 1st, uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield starts getting, uh, the money for, for the plan that we selected. So really, we, there's really, um, not a lot to gain from delaying this, other than it's just going to put us in a bind.
And, um, Legal, I have a question. As far as this process that they have to do, are they going to have to do it every single year? Reach out to agencies to get, uh, this, this coverage? Because, uh, again, not to harp on the same old thing always, but, uh, I'm always looking at the procurement policy. And so.
So was this?
So in this case, we, we're deciding to hire Capital Financial as our broker. They are in a state contract to begin with. Last year, we, we still got three bids, just, just so that for, for, to just analyze everything that we have on the table. This year, we're saying, we're, we're asking that you keep Capital Financial as a broker record. Then they're tasked with, they're, they're as our broker, they have a duty to us to find us the best rate and recommend to us the best options for the city.
But they were done through the state contract.
What?
They were done through the state.
Yes, they are. They, I think they also belong to the, um, Summer School District is, might, are they still?
They're, they.
Stulted also?
Yeah. No, I just wanted to make sure we didn't violate the policy. But if you're piggybacking on state contracts.
One, one, uh, Mayor, Council, one thing is that normally, uh, once you retain, for example, uh, not necessarily Capital Financial, but it's, it's the health coverage, um, based on Blue Cross Blue Shield, correct? Last time we did the three, three, uh, bids, normally after you do your first year of, of, uh, the procurement of the medical plans, um, at that point, you'll continue with that medical insurance for the next three, four years. Unless, unless there's a year there, the loss ratio is extremely high. Even if it's extremely high, we have to be careful enough to see if we're going to go out to bid, which we can't. But at the same time, we would have to look at what the current medical provider will give us. Normally, the, this year, we had some major, uh, claims. And that's why you saw close to a 40%, but it dropped to 8%. Normally, in order for us not to see any increase whatsoever, um, you would have to be under 80% in claims or loss ratio. In order to see a minimal amount of increase, uh, but this time it hasn't. But yes, every year we would have to go back to make sure that, uh, council approves the rates in order to make sure that we budget, as Jorge had mentioned, uh, for the following year.
What were the major claims? Do you know?
I, those are part of the HIPAA.
Well, you could just say what they were, not discuss the.
Well, we can say that there were 16 claims at almost 800,000 on this renewal action versus seven at about 165,000 on, on last.
There it is.
So, hey, not, and that's why we have insurance for the big ones. Once again, uh, you know, to, to utilize and we're going to be able to get some data moving forward. We'd be able with, with the inception of the program, the current program with Blue Cross, y'all had joined when we were under 100 employees. So that becomes in a, in more of a pooled environment where we're only able to obtain lost, or excuse me, large claim information. We've negotiated with Blue Cross. We've gotten approval from their senior management. But we're going to start getting some more data, starting with this new plan here. So we're going to be able to know a loss ratio. We're going to be able to see some things that help target some education throughout the year. And it's going to be less of a guessing game come renewal time, because we're going to have a better idea of how we're running throughout the year. Instead of the, thank you for spending all that money and now here's what you're going to pay us and we're not going to tell you why. So that's unfortunately is the environment where a lot of insurance is in. We're excited to be able to start getting some, some more data moving forward in July and really, and really starting to continue to manage and, and not only increase and just watch the benefits to make, make the best decisions.
We, we had that a couple of years ago and it was a surprise that we had to, it increased. I don't know, what was it? 20% or so or straight the year?
You know, shoot anymore, what's, when I see an 8%, I, I hate to see any increase. But there's something called medical trend, which is basically inflation. So not only we're all living longer, technology's getting better, the drugs coming out, all this that is happening. Even the best of groups, the, the young, say a, a group of young, healthy landscapers are still seeing increases, even just because of, of inflation and just the cost, that $100 office visit last year has costed us $120. So even the good utilizers are still seeing increases. So to see, uh, what would be considered a, a, an average trend or medical inflation, um, is one where, you know, nerds like myself get excited. So. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay. And then one, one additional comment too, is, um, the reason I asked what type of, uh, hospitalizations they were is, uh, we're doing a preventive, uh, uh, health training or whatever Armando's doing. How else are we supposed to know what type of, uh, trainings to provide if, if we don't ask those questions? I know I'm, I'm pretty aware of, uh, of HIPAA and any type of violations. That's why I didn't ask who. You know, I asked the, the type. So I'm curious to know that information too. So, so we could probably provide direction and makes, making sure that we do some of these trainings.
Very fair, although I would just, would just counter with a terrible situation, like cancer, something where we, we get into those larger dollar. There's nothing that's going to prevent it or stop that from happening. It's these type of events that Armando and his team are putting together, a biometric event. I've been involved in these for years. You get the person that doesn't go to the doc ever and all that. Now they come to one of these events and they're on, they're hot, their blood pressure's through the roof. I've been in a few situations where they've been offered an ambulance or driving themselves right away. And that prevents those big claims from happening down the road. When folks can understand how to manage chronic conditions, when they can find out of conditions they have before it becomes a large claim, those are the ones to get in front of and, and those are the ones that you spend your time on. And the data, that's where we're excited to get some data because those big claims, darn it, we don't want to see anybody going through those. But, but we're certainly happy to have the insurance in place when they do.
No, and, uh, and cancer is one that you can still address to a certain degree. For example, prostate cancer, you know, caught, caught early, I'm sure the treatment will be a lot less and possibly can save somebody's life. So that's why I'm inquiring in regards to, to that type of, uh, information in order for us to be able to, to. If for some reason Armando missed it, maybe we could give him direction to provide those, those type of trainings. Cause in our culture, I, I shouldn't say culture, but at least for, for me and my family, we never really went to, to a doctor. And I know a lot of families that, that grew up like that.
Absolutely. And that's where, you know, we're trying to change that paradigm and it needs to change. And Armando's team also, you may have been seeing the, the monthly newsletters, live well, be well, to having different things to help people to be healthy. And, and these type of biometric events tomorrow, Blue Cross will, will aggregate data and let us know of some conditions. That's when you, there will be some good areas to, to target as education. And just, and just have a comfort knowing that the, the cancer, these bigger claims, although, uh, you know, certainly are preventable. There's other things that can come into play. Blue Cross and their medical team, they're, that, you know, once those large ones do happen, they have care management and that to help those members and really help them with the goal of getting them, getting them better and, and helping them continue to, to get well.
Mayor, what's, what's interesting, uh, as the more you educate, uh, staff members, um, in the first two years, you'll see the increase in claims, but then it suddenly drops within the third, fourth year, um, as far as the loss ratio is concerned. Because you took, you took care of yourself, so those large claims of maybe cancer or heart attacks or what have you don't come around.
You know, Armando, there's a couple of nonprofit organizations within our city that can also participate in your, you know, uh, healthist fair or whatever, you know, for, for them to come down and, and do some series of tests to employees, you know, from glucose to weight management to, you know, um, diabetes check and stuff like that. So, you know, I, I recommend that you contact those two entities and, and see how, you know, they can contribute to the city. And I'm, I'm sure they would, would be more than glad to send their people here for your fairs, you know, to, in order to educate our staff.
Definitely. And that's definitely our, the direction that we want to, um, take the city is, um, do more education of our employees, do more, more preventive, uh, work so that we avoid going to large claims. So the wellness fair tomorrow, would they reach out to some local vendors like Summerton Night Care is coming in, um, to do, talk to employees about their services? And as well as other local, um, sunset communities also was also invited and border, regional central board health, they were also invited. So, um, and there's other vendors that will be there, uh, to talk to our employees about the services that they provide. And hopefully encourage employees to utilize those, uh, uh, preventive, uh, types of services, um, and, uh, and improve the trends.
Like, um, Vice Mayor, Bill Armando was saying, we have to be proactive, especially on our culture. Like he said, and not just in our family, because I see it and I work at the hospital and be proactive on colorectal cancer. A lot of the Hispanics get cancer on the colon and all that. And, you know, insurance pays for a color, uh, for a, uh, sigmoid colonoscopy once a year, you know? So we have to let them know, you know, it's important for us to take care of ourselves. We, you know, we try to eat very good and everything, whatever we want to eat. But if we don't do the colonoscopy, we get that pileup on time, you know? I think that will take care of the other one, but we have to encourage them. And, and I guess it's more like education, educating the, uh, people, you know, that it's, it's part of, you know, we want to survive or everything. Colonoscopy will save you a life, that's for sure.
I agree. So creating, I think creating the awareness, uh, is definitely the, the, the way to go. Creating awareness for employees and having the information out there and then creating that culture that, um, that would promote them, our employees, to take care of themselves.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion? It's a motion by Councilwoman Garcia. Second by Councilwoman Zandejas, also in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So Mr. Cabrera, the, uh, message to employees is that council voted to absorb the 8%. Okay. Now they want to take their benefits.
And also what caught my attention that he said two, three times that we're, the city is providing, uh, it's, we're serving a good cause. Not a lot of places do that to be on.
On the messaging.
I want to hear employees calling us, hey, that's great. I'm already said.
Item number five, discussion of possible action to approve a grant to the Kokopa Indian Tribe for the Rio Colorado Golf Course and Grill and the amount of 120,000 for small business relief under Corona virus state and local fiscal recovery funds.
Mayor and Council, um, as we, we had discussions with, um, Chairwoman Cordoba and Rio Colorado, the last couple of weeks and months, um, trying to figure out, uh, Rio Colorado Golf Course. And looking at our SLFR funds, um, we, we had, um, City Attorney and Finance look at, um, the necessary approval of those funds to make sure that, uh, those can be invested in small businesses as the golf course. As you know, the golf course has been struggling, uh, for the last couple of years in terms of, uh, basically due to the pandemic and then, um, especially for the summers. So we're looking at a motion to approve $120,000 for a small business relief under the, uh, coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds as, um, stated by the struggle and at the same time by those funds that can be approved as such.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion? Some motion by Councilwoman Garcia. Second by Councilwoman Zandejas, also in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, discussion of possible action to approve resolution number 2022002, a resolution of the mayor and council of City of Somerton, adopting a fair housing policy, making known its commitment to the principle of fair housing, describing actions it shall undertake affirmatively for their fair housing.
Mayor, Council, um, as a recipient of the Community Development Block Grant, uh, the Arizona Department of Housing requires that every CDBG fund recipient adopt a resolution in which the City of Somerton, uh, will firmly further fair, fair housing and proclaim April as Fair Housing Month in the City of Somerton. The resolution must be adopted on an annual basis to, to make sure that we receive those CDBG funds.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion? Some motion by Councilwoman Zandejas, second. Second by Councilwoman Castillo, also in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Summary of current events. Mayor, Council, uh, COVID-19 has started to increase again. We are level two of concern. It's not as a high number yet, but it's starting to increase. Uh, we will have an additional vaccination clinic this Thursday. Apparently Councilwoman Garcia may have more information regarding this event. Also, we'd like to remind our residents that we'll be having our neighborhood meeting next week, April 12th at 6:30 PM at Council Park, followed by Thursday at 6:00 PM at Joe Muñoz Park. Please join us to hear about the city's growth and areas of improvement. Uh, also yesterday, April 4th was a deadline to submit your packets for intention and signatures of running for mayor or, or council. There was one candidate for mayor seat and for, and for, for our council seats as well. Also, um, for Thursday, April 21st. Oh, three seats open for, for people already. There's a commission dinner, uh, scheduled for Thursday, April 21st. And at the same time, a ribbon cutting ceremony for our community center, since we now have HVAC after 25 years. Congratulations, Mr. Mesa. Just want to mention that park staff is working on landscape project, actually for the community center, preparation for the ribbon cutting. Also, we're coordinating with, um, Marlene Lada and Marion French Jones. She applied for a grant, possibly acquiring some funds for a new senior center bus. Also very important, we are preparing for the community spring games scheduled for April 13th and 14th. The 15th was, uh, council for Good Friday. We, we're going to keep it down to two days. All community members.
How many teams do you have signed up?
We have six. Two spots are open for any community member or organization, family, business. It's a free event. And, um, for more information, please contact us at 928-722-5092. We'll provide more details. Thank you. Chief Danda.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, uh, we received all the gear that, uh, you, uh, allowed us to get with the CIP. So that's a real good thing. All our people have two sets of gear now. And so now when they get one set dirty, well, they wash that one. They have a set that they can use. That's going to be good for cancer prevention for our people. Uh, the other thing is the border. Last month, we traveled eighteen times over there. And, but we had less transports than we had in January and February last month. We only had three or four transports. This month is really down. We're having like, once last week, I think we went out there. Uh, but with the Title 41 going away, uh, we're, we're saying we're going to have about 22,000 people trying to cross in this area. And so if that happens, it's kind of, we're going to be overwhelmed. It is just, uh, so all of you are advised that, you know, we have, uh, a potential real serious situation occurring. Thank you.
Chief Juarez.
Mayor and Council, good evening. Um, thankful for our dispatchers. You saw I'm here this afternoon. Uh, we're fully staffed again, uh, since I think, uh, March, March and latter part of March, our first week of April, this week, this past week. So we're fully staffed. We have an opportunity to participate, Read Across America with our school district. That was, that was a lot of fun for our animal control officers and our staff. We were out there reading to all the elementary kids. Uh, we're also working with Ms. Jones on some of the grants to replace the tasers. And we're getting ready for the other line of collaboration with the Somerton School, a library for April 30th. And the last thing is we're continuing to work with our, uh, partners, enforcement partners and qualifications and using their instructors to cross-train some of our staff as well. Thank you.
Finance, Ms. Callejos.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Um, we are still working on the budget. We're beating, we're finalizing our, our meetings with, I believe we're meeting with council next week. And, um, I just have legal and I think economic development to go. So hopefully we'll end either this, this week or the beginning of next week. I'm also working on a couple of policies which we'll be bringing forward to you in the next. I'm also working on a couple of policies which we'll be bringing forward to you in the next couple council meetings, financial policies, and that's all I have for you.
Economic development, Ms. Lada.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. As you know, today was a ribbon cutting for Al Chile, sushi, bolis, and more. Tomorrow, there's another ribbon cutting at five P M. for Azul Cafe. This will be located at Somerton Valley Center. Just to let you know, there's going to be the Fountain of Youth Spa coming soon. We are anticipating for April nineteenth. And this would be skincare, body sculpting on that beauty line. And an invitation to to the virtual panel with the topic Creative Industries in the Forefront E D by National Maker Region. This virtual panel is on on Thursday. And we are, as Jesus mentioned, we are working to apply for the appropriations for the fiscal year twenty-three congressionally directed spending request. We are currently looking working hard to apply for the public works for police department and for the Parks and Recreation. So we're and our deadline that we have is tomorrow, so we're working hard on compiling on those letters and and to submitting.
Community development. This one's.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Yesterday was the deadline to receive requests for qualifications for the zoning and subdivision code update. Surprisingly, we only received one. And what we are going to do is we're going to review this submittal and after that, we're going to decide whether we are going to stay with that company, the consulting company, and move forward the process, or if we have to go back and reopen the 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 time. We we had one month open for some middles, and we posted it, we published it in the newspaper. We also sent it to with the help of the purchasing agent. We we posted in different platforms. But for some reason, this is the first time it happens that we only receive one entry, so we'll see. I I will keep you informed as what we what we are going to be recommending to do with that process. Also, just to inform you that the improvement plans for Mac subdivision, the little subdivision at the southwest corner of Madison and Cesar Chavez, they submitted the improvement plans today, so we're going to start the review process of the improvement plans. And hopefully, we're going to keep this project moving forward, that those plans were received today. And also, the townhomes at Somerton Square, those at the corner of Spring Street and Masgrove, that have been in the works for a number of years, where the Willie Wood Apartments used to be. We issued the letter of project initiation this week, so hopefully, according to the the developer, they're going to start construction ASAP. So we'll probably see a new infield development there. But it's that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Palacios.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. An update on the Valle Vista Water Main Extension Project. Contractor completed all the PVC pipe installation for the entire project. The pending items for this project is the main drain crossing and the boring under the Central Canal. An update on the Somerton Drainage Project. Contractor continues selling the stone ring pipe on Yucca west of Orange and on Perrin Street, west of Union. Update on the one million gallon water tank rehabilitation project. K Construction submitted the bond and the signing notice of award. We should receive the signed contract this week. The Parkview Commerce Center project probably will be advertised tomorrow and Sunday, April tenth. An update on F and a quarter Water Main Extension Project, which is a high school water line extension project. Contractor continues selling pipe along the future Parkview Avenue from north to south, and approximately a thousand liter pit has been installed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, that concludes. Councilman Roldán.
I have nothing, Mayor.
Councilwoman Garcia.
Mentioned by Mr. Cabrera, we'll be having the vaccine clinic this Thursday. The Health Department will be bringing, besides COVID vaccines for anybody that's interested, they'll also be doing vaccines for children. Anybody that needs updating on on their child's vaccines for school or anything of that sort, those will be available as well. It'll be at the Cultural Center from three to six again this Thursday. Oh, and I wanted to mention about the yard sale I had spoken to Sam to. Just for the record, we wouldn't be needing any staff. It would be just residents bringing in their own canopy and and, you know, it's would be whoever of us would volunteer, myself, of course. Just getting them placed on Council Park for to have them, you know, sell their stuff. The city would make small profit of it, and, you know, the residents would too, and also help clear the junk and hopefully not have as much for Sam in September.
Councilwoman Castillo.
I have nothing, Mayor.
I attended the golf tournament for the senior center, and I want to thank Parks and Rec and especially Josue Brisa and Vanessa for staying very late and working in this golf tournament. It was really exciting. Hopefully, next year, I can be taught how to play golf from the clone golf player that we have. It seemed really cool. Also, I would like to make a recommendation for all the ribbon cutting ceremonies to have a live. You know, Vanessa does an excellent job on posting on Facebook and making it very noticeable on social media, but I think that the lives catches the the viewer's attention as they're on social media, and so these last two that we had, there was none. And so I think that with these new businesses that are coming up, you know, if if you put an address, I have no idea. Like, right now, I'm going to ask you, where is Somerton Valley Center? You know, can you educate me on that side? I don't even know about Somerton Valley Center. I've never heard of it. So where is that at? You know? So, you know, my recommendation would be that to start having those lives, either Brisa doing them or or Marvin do them. I'm just somebody, just to attract and to let the residents know to help those new business owners. But other than that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Galin.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
I just want to thank Brisa, Josue, and all the ladies there at the senior center. They did a did an outstanding job and and also thank Martha and Nena, who were there to assist there at the at the golf tournament. Look forward to next year. Didn't do too great, but oh, well.
I want to thank staff and council members for the public meetings. I know seems that we're seeing each other every day, and right now with the budget, it's going to be one of the busiest times for for us, but thanks for for showing up and staying late. The also the other golf tournament was was well organized and, you know, it was a lot of fun. We also met with through forefronted with the representative from the governor of Sonora. Was it two weeks ago? And so we had discussions on how we can cooperate with, how the region can cooperate with Sonora, and and we agreed to meet with both governors in Arizona and in Sonora. There's they're going to schedule that for the future tomorrow. We're going to have a forefronted meeting, and we're also going to meet with the mayor of Mexicali and some delegates from Baja California, so that's going to be tomorrow. And that's it. And I can't understand my other hand right here, so. Thank you. So we have an item in executive session. It's discussion and consultation for legal advice, Somerton City Attorney relating to resolve litigation involving Yuma County Intergovernmental Public Transportation Authority and member contributions. So is there a motion to exit into executive session? To enter into executive session? Motion by Councilwoman Villalpando, second by Councilwoman Sendejas. Also, favor.
Aye.
We're going to take a five-minute break and then go into the go into the room, yeah.